Good evening. And welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, September 15th, 2025. And thank you for your patience. We had a hearing run over during executive session. So we're starting a few minutes late this evening. Uh, but I'd like to thank all of you here in person and those watching from home for joining us tonight. Like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers and our new student liaisons for this year. Thomas. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Vera.
Here.
Vice President Ifker.
Here.
President Rock.
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January 7th, 2025. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of August 18th, 2025, I would like to call attention to and propose a correction to add a missing agenda item and any actions taken regarding it. Finance B Business Office Item Number 27, which is a motion to accept the FY24 preschool expansion grant funds in the amount of $1,456,000 allocated toward the Mount Pleasant Elementary School construction modular building containing six pre-kindergarten classrooms. Uh, do I have a motion to accept these minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Uh, any comments?
Uh, I think President Rock Superintendent Moore, this is a step forward for West Orange. Uh, so congratulations to Mr. Moore and his team, uh, to our business administrator for her leadership in making sure that this project moves forward with respect to the grant application. Uh, schools in West Orange moving forward, pre-Ks moving forward. That's a good thing for our town.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. All right. Hearing no one else, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moore, it is now time for your report. Would you please share your superint? I guess we will go to them first. We haven't, we didn't have one in our last meeting. So it's out of order on my script here, sorry. So we will first go to our new student liaisons. Uh, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and give us your first report of the school year.
Um, good evening, board members. My name is Adam Barakat, and I have the honor of serving as one of the student liaisons for the 2025-26 school year. Um, I'm currently a senior like my partner Nefer Tari, moving on to colleges and into a new stage of my life. Uh, during my time at West Orange High School, I've been a four-year varsity wrestler for the West Orange Wrestling Team, uh, took part in the National Honor Society and Science National Honor Society. And outside of school, I co-own a commercial cleaning company, business here in Essex County, as well as frequently volunteer throughout the county. As a lea- as a liaison, my goal is to hear out any concerns of students and attempt to resolve them. However, if situations escalate, I will be responsible for bringing them forward in board meetings to gain awareness. I'm excited to be working with the West Orange Board and assure you all that our students' population will feel supported, understood, and comfortable. Thank you for this opportunity.
Hi, everybody. My name is Nefer Tari James, and as Adam said, I have the opportunity to serve as a student liaison for the class of, for the year 2025 to 2026. Um, during my year at the high school, I've been the head manager of the girls' step team. I've been in the National Honor Society and ROKAPA. Uh, I also take time to prioritize, um, my community and volunteering a lot. And during my serving time, I wish to make sure that all the students are heard. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, Mr. Moore, now it is time for your superintendent's report. Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, President Rock. Good evening, everyone. As we enter our second full week of school, uh, things are going well. We've had some bumps, but they were addressed and remedied as quick as possible. Our Transportation Department wanted me to remind parents that please call or email. They are there to remedy the situation. We know that it hasn't been perfect as we're working with less, but we're doing more, but it has been going well. I'd like to take two minutes to thank the parents of the community. Thank you for the emails, the nice comments. When I go to the schools, thank you for the hugs and wishing me a good school year. I appreciate it. It has been very, um, humbling and very overwhelming how many, uh, nice comments I received from parents. Wish me a happy new, a good school year, but also happy with the way things are going right now. And I appreciate that. It's very motivating and I think it's, I just want to publicly thank our parents and our community. It's very motivating and it isn't easy. And it's this in my third year. I'm very happy to be here and I thank you guys for that. As we move on, tonight I would like to recognize a few things with our Special Service Department. One mention I'd like to highlight is the installation of our Communication Board at Redwood Elementary, which took place this past week. The Communication Board helps reduce stress, anxiety related to communication. This board was donated by Hayden Silver, a former student of ours, in conjunction with our WO CPAC, West Orange Special Education Parent Committee. The board was recent, the board was recently installed at Red, at the Redwood Playground. This is the second Communication Board installed within the district, one at Kelly Elementary with the help of WO CPAC and the district. And we are grateful and we are committed to ensuring Communication Boards will be installed in every playground throughout our district. Thank you, Hayden Silver, for your donation. Thank you, WO CPAC, for your generous donation and time and advocacy. Again, sticking with our special ed, Special Services Department, I would like tonight to do two things. One, welcome Dr. Derek Ressa to our community. to do two things. One, welcome Dr. Derek Ressa to our community. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Derek Ressa will be formally introduced by our outgoing Director of Special Services, Ms. Connie Salabino. So I will allow her to do that, but I personally want to say thank you and welcome to Dr. Ressa. But speaking of our Department of Special Services, tonight, we welcome Dr. Derek Ressa, who is working closely with our current Director of Special Services, Ms. Connie Salabino. Connie is retiring from the district in, as of December. I would like to introduce Dr. Ressa, but, but not before I take a moment to mention how much we will miss Connie Salabino. Connie, your dedication to the district has been unwavering, and you have served our families and our students with passion and with style. Dr. Ressa, although her shoes are smaller than mine and a lot more expensive, Ms. Salabino's shoes will be hard to fill. Of course, I am here to help with any transition and/or for you a warm welcome. So I'd like to say goodbye to our Director Connie Salabino. If we would take a little time to thank her for all her services. And welcome to Dr. Ressa. And now at this time, I'd like to call Connie Salabino to the podium. Connie, I'll meet you at the podium. Can I give you these flowers? All right.
Mr. Moore, members of the school board, my esteemed colleagues, students, families, and all of the Student Support Services staff. It is a heart, it is with a heartful of gratitude and a touch of bittersweet emotion that I stand before you today. After more than 21 years serving our district and this department, the time has come for me to retire and pass the torch to Dr. Derek Ressa. But before I do, I'd ask that you indulge me because I'd like to take a few moments to reflect and say thank you. I can still vividly remember my first day here, filled with the nervous energy and excitement of starting my journey as a new LDTC. It's hard to put into words how much this experience has shaped me professionally and personally. Over the years, I've been fortunate to serve in many roles. LDTC, Supervisor of Special Education, Principal of the Betty Manalena Early Learning Center, and most recently, once again, as your Director of Student Support Services. Each of these roles has brought unique challenges, joys, and opportunities. And each has been made meaningful because of the people I've had the privilege to work with. Dawn and Kristen, you have been more than colleagues. You've been trusted collaborators, thoughtful partners, and true friends. Together, we brainstormed through long days and supported each other through tough moments and celebrated countless successes. I'm deeply proud of what we've accomplished side by side, and I know that your unwavering dedication will continue to shine in the work ahead. To our incredible students, you are the heart of everything we do. Your curiosity, resilience, and joy have been my daily inspiration. Watching you grow, learn, and achieve has been one of the greatest honors of my career. Serving as the Principal of the Betty Manalena Early Learning Center was a particularly meaningful chapter in my journey. That role has brought me so much joy and remains one of my proudest accomplishments. To our families, thank you for the trust you've placed in us. Your partnership and commitment have been vital in creating a nurturing, inclusive, and vibrant community. To my fellow administrators and the entire Student Support Services team, thank you for your collaboration, your support, and the genuine spirit of teamwork that has defined our work together. I've grown so much because of you. Mr. Moore, concluding my career under your leadership has been deeply meaningful. Your vision, integrity, and compassion have strengthened this district in countless ways. We are fortunate to have you guiding us. And to our school board, thank you for your continued support and for the opportunity to serve in this incredible district. It has been the privilege of a lifetime. As I look ahead to this next chapter, I carry with me the memories, the lessons, and the friendship forged within these walls. Though I may no longer be present in the day-to-day, my heart will always be in West Orange. This district is more than a workplace. It's a family for those lucky enough to be a part of it. I wish you all continued success and fulfillment with the important work you do every day. On that note, it is my honor and privilege to introduce your incoming Director of Student Support Services, Dr. Derek Ressa. Dr. Ressa brings a wealth of experience in special education and a true enthusiasm to join this team. It has been a pleasure working alongside of him during the beginning of this transition, and I have every confidence that he will lead this department with insight, dedication, and heart. Dr. Ressa, Dawn, Kristen, and I are committed to ensuring a smooth and thoughtful transition. I know that the important work of this department will not only continue but thrive in the years to come. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart for being a part of this journey. Welcome to the family, Darren.
Thank you, Ms. Salabino, for the warm introduction. I first would like to congratulate you on your tenure in the West Orange Public Schools. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and your team the past few months. You'll be sorely missed, and I am truly inspired to continue the work that you have done over the years here. And my best wishes to you and your family on a wonderful and well-deserved retirement as you start your next chapter. Mr. Moore, members of the school board, staff, students, and families, it's my honor and privilege to be your new Executive Director of Student Support Services. I'm excited to join, to join such a wonderful school community, and I believe that this next step for me is a culmination of many years of learning, growth, and service and, and the next step in my professional career. I look forward to starting in this position in December and working with the team in the transition. Professionally, this past July, I began my 15th year as a Director of Student Support Services, having served in a number of districts, large and small, over the many years. Before that, I was a school psychologist for about 10 years and finally remember beginning my career as a paraprofessional in a school, serving students with special needs. All these positions have shown me very clearly the amazing work done by staff at multiple levels to make sure that students have what they need. It truly takes a village, and everyone has a role to play to ensure the success of our students. I'm also very proud to have worked together with administrators, staff, and families across the state for over 20 years to make a difference in the lives of children, affording them opportunities to grow and be the best version of themselves possible. In joining Western Schools, I'm committed to meeting the needs of the whole child, whether it's academically, emotionally, socially. And in the realm of Student Support Services, I look forward to working with all stakeholders to create partnerships and opportunities that benefit all students and their families in the school community. Personally, I'd like to thank my family, friends, and mentors and colleagues over the years for their encouragement and support, as well as the sacrifices that they made so that I could achieve the academic and professional accomplishments that I have. To my wife Katie, they're not here, but I'm going to acknowledge them as well. To my wife Katie and my children, Matthew and Bethany. I'm grateful to be your husband and your dad. Thank you for supporting me in this great profession and asking for me to, from time to time, how work is going. Thank you for supporting me, and, and also a big thank you to my elder aunts who have grown with significant special needs themselves. And they have been an inspiration to me, and I don't think I would be standing before you today if it wasn't for them. They've taught me empathy, compassion, and love, and I could not be who I am without them today. In closing, I'd like to thank Mr. Moore and his team for their leadership and selecting me as the next Executive Director of Student Support Services. I'd like to thank the Board of Education once again for trusting me in this wonderful community and also thank the community for their trust. I look forward to working with everyone, administration and staff, in the coming months as I acclimate and support all the great work you do. I'm excited to start here and be a part of the West Orange family for many years to come. And as I look forward also to working with Connie and Dawn and Kristen to foster that smooth transition as well. Thank you again for this amazing and wonderful opportunity, and I wish you a wonderful start to the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ressa. Thank you, Connie. We appreciate it. So to conclude my report, President Rock, since our last meeting, there has been, there have, have been no incidents of HIV throughout our district.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for that report. Thank you, Ms. Salabino, for your service, and congratulations and welcome to our district. Moving on to committee reports, do we have any reports from board members?
I think everyone received the report on, from the curriculum team in terms, from Michelle Martino, how things are going, how things are moving. I think the implementation of the ELA curriculum is going well. In the elementary schools, we had a chance to stop by St. Cloud where we learned a little bit more about it up close. But so far, so good. Things feel good at the opening of the school year, so we're happy.
All right. Thank you very much from the Curriculum Committee. Mr. Ifker, was there anything you wanted to share?
Vice Presidential Report, or?
Yeah, Vice President Committee, whatever you want to call it.
Okay, thank you. So good evening to everyone. I'll be brief as always. I want to welcome Dr. Ressa to the School District as a proud parent of a special needs child in, in the district. I would say you have big shoes to fill, but you have a supportive community system, board, superintendent. Everybody is here to help you in whatever you need. It's an important part of our school district, and I'm very optimistic that it'll continue to thrive in the future under your leadership. This past week or since the last board meeting, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the West Orange Council of PTA's meeting. These are the people that really do the important groundwork for our students, and we can't thank them enough. As part of my hour, since I was elected, I've tried to go to every school, and we just recently made it to, along with Dr. Bryant, we made it to St. Cloud. And I know I always say this after each school visit, but I'm going to say it again. St. Cloud is now my favorite school. I mean, that, that place is so positive, and you walk in and it's, it's gleaming. It's so, it's so clean. And the, the principal, Mr. Price, was very gracious with his time. We talked about scores going up. We talked about intervention for students who need a little extra help. We talked about curriculum. And basically what he, he said to us, and we agree, is it's not a secret anymore. Everyone knows that St. Cloud is, is doing a tremendous job. He did mention something about some new physical plant needs that they have, and I've heard that those are on the way imminently. Something about a shed in particular that he mentioned, but I'm sure that's, that's coming. So I really wanted to thank Mr. Eric Price for the time that he gave Dr. Bryant and me. It was also a special treat to run into one of my son's previous teachers, and that, that always makes a father feel good. And then finally, I just want to say along those lines that I've been speaking for various reasons with the Facilities Manager, Mr. Nick Munoz. And I think that these are sort of unsung heroes, people who don't, we don't mention them a lot, but you know, whenever something needs to be done inside the schools, outside the schools, the first, you know, it's like people say, when you walk, when you go to a restaurant, if the front door is kind of dirty and sm- you shouldn't go in. It's the same thing with a school, a hospital, whatever it is, first impressions are very important. We want our teachers to be comfortable. We want our students to, to feel proud, and you walk in those classrooms and they're literally shining. So I just wanted to, as the kids say, give a shout out to Mr. Nick Munoz. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Anything for Ms. Vera?
Definitely. Well, good evening, everyone. It was a great pleasure to be part of the welcoming at Kelly Elementary School. My granddaughter is attending kindergarten there, and I want to congratulate the whole entire staff, Mr. Marion and the teachers. And what is more important is make the, the kids happy, make, motivate them to attend the school. And I like that kindness that Ms. Swan has with the kids. She's sent by mail a bag with confetti that they have to put under the pillow night before. So my granddaughter was so excited to get there, and I was happy to see everybody's, all the kids' faces, all the kindergartens. And I say, you know, this, and I say, Penelope, do you like the school? Abuela, I love my teacher. I love my school. Congratulations, Mr. Marion, and the whole entire staff for the organization, for the kindness they have to welcome all the students, everybody, not only kindergarten. You know, all the kids in Kelly Elementary School. And the only thing I can say, you know, welcome to the school year 2526. Best wishes for the students, the staff, administrators, and the board members as well. You know, that's the only thing I can say tonight, but you know, expecting more visits because I'm going to continue to visit the school with my partner, Dr. Ifker, and to get more information. So definitely, you know, I think this is going to be one of the best years again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. All right. Thank you for all those reports. I would like to share with you now my board president's report and talk about a little of what's going on at St. Cloud Elementary. Fancy that, which is also my favorite school since it's the school around the corner from my house. A ribbon cutting. I'll let you add that. A ribbon cutting ceremony took place at St. Cloud Elementary School recently to unveil a new mural painted on the school's blacktop. Commissioned by the St. Cloud PTA, designed with a focus on inclusion and fun, the project was brought to life through the talented local artists, Michael David Adams and Victoria Bowers-Adams, whose creative vision brought this project to life. Support to complete this project was provided by students in our high school's Mountaineers Mentoring Club. In addition, at St. Cloud, Principal Eric Price and his fifth grade students were joined by West Orange High School sophomores, Lucas and Cooper Tulick on September 10th to place the flags in front of St. Cloud School, where they will remain through September 19th in honor of September 11th. The flags were obtained through a Youth Service America Grant. As alumni of St. Cloud Elementary School, Lucas and Cooper wanted to give back to the school community where we started our journey as students because St. Cloud provided such a strong foundation for our educational journey. In addition to the flags, our high school students purchased over two dozen community service books for St. Cloud students. And if you walk by St. Cloud, you'll also see evidence of one of the long-term commitments that this board has made to the physical plant throughout our districts. Since the time that I've been on this board and probably for a long time before that, the PTA has been, and parents in general, have been asking about air conditioning because summers are getting hotter, classrooms are getting hotter, and, and we just haven't had the capacity to do that. We've had people ask if they could buy window units, and the problem was that we didn't have the electrical capacity within the buildings throughout the district to do that. About two years ago, we had the architect come out. They did a, for a long-term facilities plan, a review of all of our buildings. Architect stood at this podium and gave us a list of the cost of all those projects, which would have been about $200 million. We don't have $200 million, so we couldn't do everything on that list. And to perfectly do the whole air conditioning project would have been a significant part of that, to, to fully renovate everything with the central air and all those fancy things in a perfect world would have been prohibitively expensive. But as we set out in the budget of last school year, 2024, 25, we made a commitment to upgrade the electrical capacity throughout all of our elementary schools to install window units. And that project is now coming to fruition this year in June, just before the end of last school year. The air conditioners at Washington Elementary School went online. The work at St. Cloud and Kelly continued over the summer. It was supposed to be done last spring, but due to the global supply chain being what it is, some of those projects got delayed. They're putting the finishing touches on those two schools now as we speak, so they should be up and running soon. And the remaining districts Hazel, Gregory, Mount Pleasant, and Redwood should receive their upgrades later in the spring, with the goal of them being air conditioned as well, either by the end of this school year or the beginning of next school year. Again, depending on global supply chain issues and all those things that are out of our control. What isn't our control is this board has maintained a commitment to that. We know the importance of that. We've heard from the community about that. This is, you know, we're seeing that put into action now. And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Stop for Nikhil, just happening here at the high school on Sunday. It's a 5K fundraiser. Anybody wants to come and run with us? No, no takers? Okay.
Maybe.
I am the defending champion for the forty to forty-five male age group. So if anybody would like to challenge me in that, I'll, I'm not challenging any of the students to erase, but I'll challenge any of the adults that want to erase me. Nine o'clock, I believe. Anybody at home, we'll see you at nine o'clock out on the stadium. Thank you. And that concludes my report. We will now move on to questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jacqueline Handy, Six Beverly Road. I just want to welcome you all back to, to school. And just, I'm just so encouraged with some of the recent developments and the outreach that this committee has brought forth to members of the community. And for the first time in a long time, I'm feeling heartened. The world is so chaotic and so out of our control. So to be able to feel like maybe we can make a little bit of difference here at home really goes a long way. So just want to thank you all for showing up for our kids. Thank you for your compassionate leadership, Mr. Moore. And I'm just really excited for what's on the horizon and it's probably the only time you'll hear me say that for a while, but thank you, guys. That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no one else, we will move on to our resolutions. May have a motion to approve the personnel items, A1 through A6.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. I want to congratulate the following retirees. Sandra Bochesi, a library media specialist at Edison Middle School for her 20 years of service. Mary Queiroz, an ESL teacher at Kelly Elementary for her 23 years of service. Luz Bermudez, a head custodian at Redwood Elementary for his 17 years of service. Zelchko Mirak, a head custodian at St. Cloud Elementary for his 25 years of service. And Angela Salazar, a custodian at Liberty Middle School for her 19 years of service. Thank you all for your service to West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next, may have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items, B1 through B8.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, and thank you, Ms. Vera. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes. All right. Next, may have a motion to approve the finance items, C, special services items, A1 through 5, and business office items, B1 through 8.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
AI, it also reduces screen time for students. This requires teachers obviously to print out physical, print out and provide physical copies to students with directions, questions and rooms for answers and essays. Teachers who have a large amount of essays to grade or helping students write their college essay at the high school often print them out as grading on the computer is not always conducive to helping the student. And the strain on the eyes from staring at a screen to grade one hundred and twenty-five multi-page assignments is not conducive to grading. Students in many related arts classes district-wide use these to inspiration for different activities, determine edits, display on bulletin boards or display cases, that will be lost. The copy machines in many of the buildings are out of order for days at a time. Will that be the case with the centralized printer areas? At the high school alone, since we started last, two Tuesdays ago, at least one of the three copiers has gone down for multiple days, every day since school started, including getting an email today that another one went down. Phil stated in his email that budgetary concerns as well as security concerns for older printers were two of the reasons to change to this model. Nobody's arguing that those are both issues. But if that's the case, will administrators also be losing the printers in their offices and need to go to a centralized location? And finally, my biggest complaint is once again, a decision that affected every teacher K to twelve, never got a single teacher's input as to how it might be able to work or why it couldn't. Education, in my opinion, is not and is a long time away from being a paperless or near paperless environment, but teachers need to be included in these discussions. Thank you.
Do you want me to pause?
No, when we're done, we may.
Okay, got it.
Continue with all the comments.
Sure. So, hi, I'm Jill Harris, nine Ardmore Road. I'm a member of the West Orange Parents for Education. Whoop. We are very much looking forward to the budget meeting this week. I know several people are going to be in attendance from our group. And we want to thank everyone for making this meeting happen with a special shout out. Yeah, shout out, as the kids say, to Dr. Ifker for, for helping us get that on the books. Welcome back, everybody, and welcome to our student liaisons. One quick question on behalf of the group. Have we gotten any early information from the state about what to expect regarding funding for the next year? As if you didn't see that coming. Yeah, that's it. And Ms. Vera, the jitter glitter really does work for kindergarteners, I promise. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Nohasadani, Six Powell Drive. I was watching the West Orange Town Council debate yesterday and what really stood out for me yesterday was how many questions from residents focused on taxes and want a clearer communication about how our local dollars are being used. Since our school budget is such a big part of our local taxes, it's natural that people want to feel confident their taxes are being managed responsibly. I couldn't also help thinking about what recently happened in Montclair, where the district ended up with an eighteen million deficit, reportedly because of poor bookkeeping. That's heartbreaking for their community. And it shows quickly, trust can be shaken when the numbers don't add up. So I have three questions for you guys tonight. What guardrails do we have in place here in West Orange to prevent something like that from happening? How are we helping residents understand where school funds are going? And as we think ahead to big infrastructure projects, are there other ways we could raise the money without the need of putting more pressure on taxpayers? So I'm asking these questions, like so many families. I care deeply about our future of our schools and our town. Transparency builds trust. And when our community trusts the process, it makes it easier for everyone to come together and support the amazing work what's happening in our schools. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you do for West Orange. I will follow up with an email so you can get the time to respond back to me. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lisa Rodino. I'm a teacher at Washington. I live in Roseland, one twenty-one Liberty Way. Just here for a couple of reasons. I'm so excited about the new school year. I'm happy that you've all been at St. Cloud to see their great new mural. I am a little concerned about the whole sort of Council of PTAs and how that plays out at Washington. Where our children are playing in a parking lot while the children at St. Cloud are playing on this beautiful new mural. And it's just, it's frustrating for us at Washington. We're never going to get that kind of financial support from our community. We don't even like to ask for it from our community members. So that's just something to think about to problem solve. I don't really know what the answer is or like what can be done about that, but it's just something that weighs heavily on my heart. Another thing that's weighing on my heart is at Washington, we're a very needy school, along with the other Title I schools. And currently, it is my understanding that the reading specialists at the three Title I schools are being shared while the other non-Title I schools have full-time reading specialists. I do not understand how we can square that with the neediest students in the district. It makes, you know, we just recently got a very lovely note from Superintendent Moore congratulating the teachers at Washington for the great gains we made last year. We need all the support that we can muster to keep those gains going in the right direction. And I just, I am, I'm begging that we reconsider our resources to that. And just one little frisky comment, I can't help myself, I'm sorry. It's frustrating, we're in a year where at Washington, again, needy school, we really were rallying for an additional teacher at the fourth grade. We were told there were no funds, we understand this. And I'm looking at the agenda and we hired a fairly expensive fiscal specialist during a fiscal crisis. And I'm just curious if that need for fiscal surveillance couldn't have been done through forensic accounting or something of that nature. It's just, it, it's hard to, it's hard to read that when we're begging for for resources and for help and we're losing valuable teachers and we're gaining people at central office and it, it doesn't, it doesn't validate what you're telling us. And as someone who has been dedicated to this district since two thousand and three and I'm, I'm still fighting, it's, it's hard to square. So I'm just asking you to consider it and give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. That closes public comment for the evening. There's a couple of things to touch on or share. So one, in terms of state funding, no, we don't have any early information about that yet. The two things that the state funding is based on is one, the equalized valuation of properties in town. That number is determined by the Department of Community Affairs in Trenton and they do that in October, I believe. So once that number is established, that's part of what our formula is and will give us some indication. The other piece is determined by the Treasury based on income throughout the throughout the town. We don't find that out about, we don't find out about that until the state actually releases to us our funding formula information. That's not, that income, aggregate income from the Department of Treasury is not public in any other sense. That piece is just a big question mark that we unfortunately have no idea about until it comes. It's one of the problems with New Jersey's school budget process is that the state holds this information close to its heart. We find out in February after the governor gives his budget address and then we're kind of stuck trying to build a budget, you know, with a month to go before we have to present it. So I would love to tell you that we know what's coming. I could hypothesize about a few things, but I don't have any firm information now. Couple of other budget things. So in terms of safeguards to make sure that we don't have a budget crisis like some of our neighbors. East Orange would be another good example, last year where they had mid-year rifts as a result of budget crises. I would say that two things, one, we've got a business administrator that keeps the books, when we have our audit every year that comes, there are no significant issues with that process. We keep a healthy fund balance in our district and sometimes that means making hard decisions in the budget. Right? We could play all kinds of games with the budget. We could take that fund balance and we could spend it on other things so that every year that we spend it is happy. But at some point, like our neighbors have found out, that bill comes due and then you have a problem. So we have chosen to prioritize the long-term health of the district. And that's essentially the main safeguard is that we're looking for that long term to make sure that we don't come into a situation where we spent money today that we need for tomorrow. And the other thing I would say is that for facilities and funding those, we are always looking for other ways to fund them. We mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, a grant that we've received for some pre-K facilities. We've also, through the state budget process, received additional funding for capital improvements for playgrounds throughout the district. We are always looking for grants and state funding where we can do that. Other than that, the only two ways to fund, we also had some, some private donations, things like the scoreboard out at the football stadium, but those things are much smaller in scale than the big state grants. Other than that, the only ways to fund it are through property taxes, either through the regular budget or through a referendum. We have not chosen to do a referendum for major projects yet. We've been, you know, going year by year and making our commitments like we did with the air conditioning. But, you know, either we spend what the state gives us or it has to come out of the town's taxpayers. It's the only way we fund schools here in New Jersey. Again, I wish it could be different and I wish there was money somewhere else that I could spend.
Brian, I just wanted to perhaps add that the budget's also cascade. So there are things happening on the Hill in Congress. So specifically, a lot of the cuts that were in BBB were moved over into another bill that has been in markup for the last two weeks. Those same cuts are still in that bill and folks are trying to negotiate those cuts out. So we also will not know our number until DC gives us, gives Jersey what it's getting and then Jersey will be able to allocate based on property value, per capita income, et cetera, according to the formula.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bryant.
Yeah.
All right, was there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Moore, to public comment?
No, I just wanted to assure our Washington advocates that I tried, we tried to work with the fourth grade thing by giving it a classroom assistant because we couldn't, we couldn't come up with the funds. We did try to get the funds first and we couldn't come up with the funds for an extra teacher. But we, what happens, and I can't answer the one question about the reading specialist and how that rotates. But what I can say is for our Title I schools, we did dedicate one supervisor and coach to that, which is more than any other schools will get. Other than that, she's committed to working with our thing. And I will have to check on how often you guys get the reading specialist and how that works and, and I appreciate, and shout out to the Dolphins because that's where I'm from. But, but I appreciate the Dolphins and Washington School, which is one of my favorite schools since we're talking about favorites. And I appreciate the teachers talking about our blacktops because for years when I worked there, again, what was always a concern to me was the cars and the blacktops. And we've tried to do the best we've can with that. But we can always look at that again. We have a new facilities manager in Nick, who was part of Washington at one time. So I think we can, you know, as relationships, we should talk to him and maybe come up with a better solution. I'm not sure, you know, that we're going to be able to break up the, the blacktop and provide grass, but maybe we can find a better way of segmenting it a little bit that would look differently. And I'll have him look at that as I'll take a note of that today. But I can't answer the rotation for you because I don't know how that actually works. But I will say that we do have you in mind and we agree with you that we want to make sure and give our children what they need because you guys have done a great job at Washington. The teachers, you guys really care and it showed with the improvement of our students, our students achieving without needing any other kind of help to achieve. It's, it's, it's an amazing thing and I was moved to write you all because I am, I love what you've done and I love how hard you've worked with our students. And, you know, I'm always rooting for them to, to succeed. Where in rooms that people think they couldn't succeed in, so I appreciate that. But I can't, I can't promise you on the reading specialist either, so let me say that too. But I promise you, I'll take a closer look at it. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you very much to everyone tonight. Our next board meeting will be held at six thirty PM on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. This meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going back into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you all for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.